The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children and proudly we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not so good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Oktibah County Hospital, we are celebrating 30 years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
Thank you, mate. D.C. First item on the agenda is approval of the official agenda. And we do have prepared for you, we did have prepared for you an I consent agenda. And Alderman, Lincoln, if you would take the privilege, please, to go through that.
Mayor's Board, for your consideration, items for the agenda and additions under Mayor's Business Item B, emergency repair of city sirens with Bob's radio. We don't add that item.
Just add that on there, please.
Emergency repair of city sirens with Bob's radio. And for the consent agenda, Board Business Item A, B, C, D, and E. Item H. Item I with a $50 price tag. Item J. Under Item K, Item 1. Item 2, the engineering firm selected from the Infrastructure Committee is Neil Shaper. Request that be on the consent agenda. And Item 3, the engineering firm for Reed Road will be Springer Engineering, also placed on the consent agenda. Airport, all four items. Office of the City Clerk, Items 1 and 2. Courts, Item 1. Electric Department, Item 1. Personnel, Item 1. Police Department, Item 1 and Item 2. And Public Services, Item 1 and Item 2.
This time, does anyone would like to remove anything or is this as we would ever want?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Being on the consent agenda, but on Item 3 from the Infrastructure Committee-
Yes, ma'am.
-with the Reed Road project-
Yes, ma'am.
I'm hoping that this is not something that's going to be put on hold, that they're going to do the Springer Engineering or do this, but it'll be months before they start on it. I hope this isn't something that will start soon.
This is something that will start immediately, is that right?
Immediate with the word.
Thank you. No further comment.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. With those suggestions, our here approval of the official agenda.
So move.
You have a second?
Second.
Motion, uh, second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. You want to prove it now? Uh, yeah, we can go ahead. If you want to make a motion to approve it.
Move approval of consent agenda as a member. Second.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Brings it down to approval, Board of Alderman Minutes of recess meeting of January the 20th.
Mayor's Board, move approval of January 20th, 2009 minutes.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There, brings us down to announcements and comments by the Mayor and the Board of Alderman Minutes tonight. Y'all bear with me. Uh, the new bike position in front of City Hall, in which we're trying to promote people to be more mobile with the bicycles, use them, ride them down here, park in front of City Hall, come in and visit with us. Uh, I have a presentation tonight for Mr. Gary Bell. Is he here tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That, uh, this is in recognition to Mr. Bell of 21 years of loyal and dedicated service to the City of Starkville Water Department. And let me tell you how important that is. That is very important. I mean, you know, just to know where these valves are and getting the water to the proper place where it ought to be. He had dedicated service from August the 5th, 1987, through November the 30th, 2008. That's a long time.
That's a long time.
And we would like to show our appreciation by giving you this plaque for your recognition of retirement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. One of the next things where I'm thumbing through this is this weekend, we have a garden expo that's going to be put on by the Starkville Arts Council at the, uh, at the Horse Park. And, uh, all of you, this is the first one, I believe, that we've put on in Mallow. I see that you wanted to distinguish speakers and that, uh, this is the first of its kind that we've had in our community, from my recognition. We have a city full of gardens and, uh, small gardens, a lot of interest. And if you have any interest in gardening, this could be a great opportunity to go with this. I believe it's $5 for a ticket. Lot of good programs. I'd like to commend our Chief of Police, David Lenny. Are you here, David?
Yes, sir.
Great. That has recently been named the Chairman of the Mississippi Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission. This is a very high honor. A very high honor. We want to thank you for that high honor and recognize you for that.
Thank you, Mike.
The city has established its first paperless agenda packet. Uh, it is located at the city website, citystarkville.org, under the heading Agenda, and its minutes is labeled as an e-package. And this is part of our ongoing report to be a sustainable community by cutting down on the generation of paper usage. So, uh, the city is in a mode to really promote, uh, this type of, uh, stuff. Let's see. Tammy, is that everything at this point?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Sproul, did I cover everything?
I believe you did, ma'am.
Okay, good. Y'all kept handing me all these notes and things here to reach out with. So, we will move forward with our agenda. So, a lot of good things are happening this week. Just a, just a ton of things are happening. And we have our Arts Festival coming up in a little over, uh, a month, about five or six weeks from now, which will be a big event, I can imagine. The lady who is here tonight to represent the President's Commission on the Status of Women in Mississippi State, be the first public appearance that we have. And after she has made her presentation, uh, any one in the public is welcome to say whatever they wish to say.
Please.
Please, if you'll tell us your name and that you're representing the university.
My name is Mary McLunden, and I'm representing the university for the President's Commission on the Status of Women. And we had asked for a few moments of your time. Um, we are a committee that's, um, tasked with the role of finding out any issues for women in the university and addressing those issues, trying to bring them to the President's attention. We work directly for him. We are in the midst right now of doing our awards ceremony and nominations for that. And we wanted to make sure we got the word out. We do a community award in addition to doing awards for undergrad students and grad students and professional staff. And so, if anyone, anyone, as women, that they would like to nominate for that, just go to msstate.edu, the university's website, and type in PCSW or President's Commission on the Status of Women, and you'll find our webpage, and we have a nomination form there. It's very easy. Um, I've already done two of them. It's very easy to do. And the deadline is this Friday, but if you need an extension, since this meeting is happening to be the same week as the deadline, Jamie Runnels is, uh, the coordinator of that, and that's also on the, the webpage. If you click on the awards link, and you can contact her, and she will give you an extension. It's very easy to do, um, so I encourage anyone to nominate people they feel worthy. We also do other events. Uh, the awards are just what we're most known for. We co-sponsored the think pink game for the women's basketball team, um, who I work with, against Auburn. And we co-sponsored Women's History Month, which is this month, and we had a wonderful speaker last night, Barbara Jenner Martinez. And she spoke, uh, over at the hall last night, and I heard, um, nothing but the good things about that. We have, um, worked with, um, some childcare surveys, and that was actually addressing some availability of it in the community and on campus. And, um, sponsored some equipment that went to a childcare service on campus. And we've also done a victimization survey recently. Our goal is to get to the particularly at the university. And so, we're just trying to get some public relations going and, um, get our name out there. I believe that's everything. Any more information, though, uh, all of our contact information is on the website. It's very easy to find.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, anyone else who would like to have a public comment this time is welcome to jump Mr. Stern, how are you tonight?
Bringing to Mayor's Board, uh, we, that we are very excited that, uh, we are trying to land and do something now. Our stock signs and everything look pretty. And, uh, that is, it gets a pretty sight. Um, and the citizens are proud of us. Uh, the citizens also would like to thank, you know, this board for the things that we have gotten done these last four years. And we hope that the next four years, we can get more done. That our leaves, these papers here, uh, they hope. The citizens hope that we don't have a lot of, uh, potential to kill a lot of our needs. Uh, things are not going to get any better, and they're not going to get cheap. Uh, those who, who understand that, citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Stern. Who else would like to get up and say something this time?
Mayor Camp and Board, I've really enjoyed getting to spend time with y'all this year and, uh, worked within during the 2008 and 2009 academic year. But I wanted to take this Alderman meeting to come by and formally introduce you to our new SA President or Student Body President of Mississippi State, Mr. Blake Jeter, and see if Blake wanted to make a few comments to y'all.
How are you doing? I wanted to come by and just personally introduce myself. Um, I'm Blake Jeter, and I'm really looking forward to working with y'all over next year. Um, we've really got some good things done in City of Starkville, so I'm really excited about getting started, getting my feet wet and keeping this guy up to date. Thank y'all, and, uh, thank you for what you do.
We appreciate your participation in the past year or so, and I feel like that we got a lot of things done over the course of the year, and, uh, we hope that you will participate as much as, uh, Braxton has done, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Mayor Camp.
Well, yes, sir. Thank you and thanks the Board for all of your help this year within the Student Association.
Thank you.
To our Honorable Mayor Dan Camp and to the Board of Alderman, my name is James Little, and, uh, I am here representing COCO. And, uh, just wanted to say first, thank the Board and the Council for your support for COCO organization in the past, and that you know that we appreciate everything that you've done. During the year 2009, COCO will be celebrating 25 consecutive years to Southfield Community and County of Artivea. And we are still in business there. Nothing, this year, in June 6th, COCO will be hosting again the Awards Banquet, in which we honor all of those who have so, uh, so supported the COCO organization during the past two years. And a special invitation to you, as the Mayor and the Council, to come and share this celebration with us. You are someone representing your position. You are welcome. Today, on behalf of COCO organization, we are asking the City of Starkville to again support us by taking a fourth day ad in our booklet, in COCO booklet, as possible. However, any contribution you can give will be appreciated. A list of the fees of the ad book can be presented. I will leave a copy with you and any other information you may desire. One of the main sources of support for the COCO organization is through individual memberships. The memberships for our above members are $24 a year. For youth under the age of up to 18, it's $5 per year. And recommendations are very dollars a year. So, we again invite you first, thank you for caring, for COCO, for supporting us in every way. And if it's in your will, we would appreciate again that you take and, uh, come and add in our book this year. If there are any questions, I would like to thank you possibly.
Mr. Little, I'm not for sure if you're aware of what we deal with the consent agenda. The Mayor and the Board has already at this, at this meeting approved for a $50 contribution, so we just wanted you to know that the Board has already taken official action for your request.
Thank you very much. And all that may go on to official business and I, I, I think we'll find some indication of the same question. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Citizens' comments, we're back there.
Hold on a second here. Um, I am here to ask a few questions of you members of the Board, one of whom is not here. The word is recycling. About 16 months ago, the Divocation Committee put forth a list of items that we wanted the Board to consent, I mean, to consider. Recycling is one of those. The Board has dealt with some of the other matters, and Ben and Jeff and Winslow have all worked with us carefully and closely on getting some things moving, uh, with ordinances. In December of last year, I was, I came before you to ask at that time, what was going on with the Recycling Committee? It's a committee that the Alderman had appointed with Mike Lawrence chair and with Sumner and I believe Lincoln, uh, being on that committee. One of the things that's happened since then is that that committee has failed to meet and failed to move. Now, Sumner, you and Mike are leaving the Board. And I'm afraid that unless something happens with this fairly soon, you're going to leave with a legacy of inertia and delay and postponement. The time has come, the time has long since come, to get moving on this. And if the Aldermanic Committee is unwilling to do what needs to be done, to move the recycling, curbside recycling forward, perhaps you ought to just abolish the committee yourselves. But I do want to ask Lincoln, particularly you and Sumner, what, if anything, do y'all plan to do on recycling? We've got a survey that's was due on the 10th. The last time I was here, the excuse at that time was, well, we got a survey. The survey has been completed, the deadline was December the 10th. Now, what's going to happen? Are we going to have more delays, more postponement, more inertia? Are we going to move ahead on this? Tupelo's already done its work, Ridgeland's done its work, progressive towns all over the United States have done it. Pensacola, Florida listed as one of its highly prioritized items for its stimulus money to do more for recycling. And the landfill in Pensacola is closer than the landfill here to the center of the city. So, I guess the question is, what are you guys going to do? Lincoln?
Well, the last meeting we didn't meet because there was two items on the agenda that the data was not ready for.
How long is it going to be? The deadline was December the 10th. We're not talking about a complex questionnaire. A complex, very simple questionnaire.
This was a service that was provided through the MSU, and so, we got the data to them, and since then, they have returned our answer to the survey. So, the next recycling meeting, it will be on the agenda, which will be next week, or next week. And then, the other item was the alley cat trucker with the contract. Bobby's been working on it. We've got it ready for Stan Scher to sign, so the alley cat can be in use and, uh...
Curbside recycling?
Clyde, here's, here's the deal that the committee is wrestling with, is number one, curbside recycling citywide, who's going to do it? How does it get done? How much is it going to cost? And where does money come from? Those are the big issues, as you probably can imagine. Uh, the committee hadn't even, and the committee is made up of, of more than just the three Alderman, obviously, there are citizens appointed to it as well. Uh, we have talked in and around those issues, but we haven't gotten down to specific brass tags. This is a recommendation that we want to go with, to cost X amount of dollars, let private contractor, ABC, handle it, or in-house staff handle it with additional equipment, money, manpower. You know, those are the details that have to be worked out, and hopefully, we can move forward and make a recommendation to where that decision can be made quickly, I would hope. Uh, yeah. But those are the issues that are being wrestled.
Well, others wrestling with those issues, and I don't want you guys to use that as an excuse to reinvent the wheel. The wheel has been invented, it's worked all across the United States in various ways, in various towns, in various, various areas. So, let's, let's move ahead, folks.
Well, it's not like we don't have recycling now, the wheel's all intact.
Well, I'm aware of that. I've been involved in this for many years. Visit those with great regularity. And, and, and you're exactly right. We don't need to reinvent the wheel. The problem is, there's a whole bunch of different wheels out there with a whole bunch of different sizes, and we need to find the right fit for us. You know, Tuscaloosa, Alabama does it different than Tupelo, Mississippi does, and Auburn, Alabama, which doesn't, I'm sure, different than Pensacola, Florida does.
Of course.
And, and so, I mean, it's not a one size fits all solution. And so, you know, we, you know, and I appreciate your sense of urgency, and, and I'm sure that the committee members would like to move very quickly on, you know, uh, I'm sure-
Judge Pymale, I got today, yeah, he was there.
And, and I appreciate that as well. So, let me say that we would like to move with all due posthaste to get towards making a recommendation with specifics of a workable curbside recycling program to the City of Starkville.
We'll be watching.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on. So, I have a lot of appearances. And the first one we have is Jeremiah Boomer's, on behalf of Starkville Community Market.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Board of Alderman. Uh, this time last year, what was, uh, April of last year, we came to you asking for the intense service of shutting down the street. So, the Starkville Community Market, I appreciate that item being put on the consent agenda tonight. Um, but in respect to that, I did want to go through and show some images of last year. I think, uh, we had a good event this weekend, a fundraising event where we raised several thousand dollars, a couple of thousand dollars. We have some great sponsorships and good community partners, and we're moving forward at a, at a good pace. So, just to begin with, we started June 14th of last year. We, um, hang on, was I wrong, I said October 10th?
It was.
Um, and our hopes was to stay up until October 25th, but we were able to, we had to close down on a lot of produce with farmers at the end of the first year of the, of the market. But as you can see, this is our first time in Starkville Community Market. As you look, we had more tomato plants, as you see there on the left, than we did actual tomatoes. We had seven vendors on the first market. This picture kind of shows the extent of the, of the market. Um, we had some produce, we had some bread, had a little granola, but the rest of it was mainly art. And the, uh, non-art items that were there sold out by 7:30. And I think some of the biggest issues... Want to come back on? Want to come back on?
I hear one.
Okay, go ahead. Well, these sitting behind me can see the nice images I have of y'all doing it down. We had some new potatoes and some green tomatoes. I want to take a few minutes. A few minutes?
It's been, it's been acting up, so.
All right. But we had, uh, this is just a nice image of some fruit and some peppers. We had, uh, Ms. Self, this is a nice image of you talking to one of the nice artists here. We had photographs, we had a number of things. This is a, uh, an image of, of Ed Kemp debuting his Ed Bread, which sold out in about 15 minutes. I think he was, uh, he had Ed Bread. How many markets were you there, Edward? Five, five markets or so?
Maybe, maybe.
Three? And I think it was a, uh, it became such an overwhelming experience because of the mass that he was able to move and the volume he was able to move. And we saw that enough with a number of times. That's a bad problem to have. As much bread as was being made, we were selling. Arnold Peters Happy Singers, I'm sure all of you are aware of their, uh, I don't even know how you, how many people you, you account for that. But, um, we were serenaded with Good Sounds. Tom Henderson, this is a, this is a testament of the artists that were at the market. Tom Henderson started out the market as a solo artist. He, um, should be coming back up here. And as I'll show as we move through, and Mayor, this is a good picture of you and the first lady. Yeah, it's a nice picture. But it's, uh, the first event was, was an eventful meeting. Now, this is, uh, this is the meeting, here we go. I'll go back and show the mayor in person. Tammy's, uh, getting things done as usual. Um, this is the ribbon cutting, July 14th, or, uh, 24th was the ribbon cutting. This was our grand opening, and five, this was four weeks removed from our opening day. Uh, seven vendors on the opening day, we had 25 vendors, the, uh, the grand opening. As you can see, an early morning street shot, this is before it gets busy. You can see, uh, to what extent the actual vendors, uh, went down the street. And this was a pretty typical occurrence at, at the closing of the market. A lot of produce, as you can see on the billboard there, produce arts and crafts, had cooking demonstrations with tie-teams, interactive art. There was a good mixing and mingling of people from all over the community. Uh, one of my greatest experiences with it was seeing that people, uh, would actually come up, buy their produce, have their coffee, and linger and talk for 30, 45 minutes. Some people were there. The whole market would help us close down. You see our, some of our community partners, Robbie Ward's here with the Johnny Cash Flower picking festival. Lot of good items. Peaches, tomatoes, community partners, as I mentioned, with Starkville Reeds, flowers, breads, dog treats on the left, uh, a lot of beautiful art, handcrafted art. We could go on and on and on about the budding artists that came out and we helped incubate through the market. Cooking demonstrations, as you see, award-winning chef tie-teams. These were great experiences for the market. Kids' demonstrations with, uh, interactive art pieces that were sponsored by Creative Warehouse, pottery, um, pottery wheels and art demonstrations for kids. I mentioned Tom, Tom on the left there. Tom started out as a solo artist and just by virtue of the market experience, we had multiple music. Tom Henderson, Ray Carlisle, and Rob Leach, they're, and they're playing this weekend on the Garden Expo. And as you can see, how the, the market really changed through the years. So, we're very excited about this year. We, um, the one change we do have in the whole, in the, in the whole setup of the market, and this came from surveys that we have with vendors, with downtown merchants, with, um, people that came to the, and consumers of the market. One thing they kept asking for was later hours, so last year, we were open from 7:00 to 11:00. This year, the only change we have is pushing it from 8:00 to 12:00. And so, we're just one hour later, and that's helping our vendors. One of our biggest produce vendors comes from Tupelo, and so, that's, um, that hour drive getting up at 4:00 o'clock and picking produce will be a little easier when it's a little labor. So, I want to thank all of you. Um, the city's been a great partner in this, and John Leonard's here with Partnership. They're proving to be another great partner this year, and I want to, uh, to thank all of you for your support. Are there any questions?
Where was the picture of you that's been up on the ag, the Vision Ag's webpage?
On the website, yeah.
Splash across the front with the goofy hat.
You like that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's God's right. That one wasn't as bad as the one where I was holding.
Yeah, you signed up for the first time this year.
Oh, and I didn't even say that. Now, that's, you're gonna, March 2nd is our first day. Last year, we started June 14th.
May 2nd.
May 2nd, I'm sorry, not March, May 2nd. May sixth, I'm sorry, not March, May second. With that, we, we know we've got three or four good produce vendors that will be with us through the year. Now, May second will be a little early for tomatoes and some of the other things. We're trying to get early enough because D and G Farms in Tupelo's got eighteen thousand strawberry plants in the ground. And we're hoping that we can be early enough to catch his last pickings of strawberries. He's, he'll start selling strawberries in two or three weeks. But we're, we're trying to span the gap between those late spring vegetables, late winter vegetables, and those early tomato vegetables. But we, our vendor, our vendor list is, is very strong.
Mayor, I introduced you Jeremiah Roderick, and I remember calling you a dangerous.
Yeah.
And, and I called you dangerous because you're one of those people who don't just talk about things, you get them done. And I really congratulate you and Tammy and Bill and others who made this happen. And it really does contribute to our sense of love here. So congratulations.
I appreciate it. Yeah, this is definitely not just me, Tammy and there's several of them. Phil Poe, if you have seen the first picture, had Bill being a consumer, and then through the summer, he, he, um, he came over to our side, so I don't know how he, how he would have been doing that. Thank y'all. Your story ready?
Thank you, Jeremiah.
Thank you.
Our next is a presentation and request by Chairman of the Parks Commission, question to the budget of the, of funding of the additional cost to the new sportsplex building. Y'all have a package, I mean, in your package, you had a sheet, but this is a little more detailed and current here. When we started this project two years ago, we knew that the bond, the money in the bond with, that we had would not completely finish our project. We knew that we would get close, but with some items that we would not be allowed, able to do. But Matthew Rye and myself sat down and went over the contract. We cut out some things that we felt that we could do cheaper than what was in the contract. In doing that, we saved a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars in the bond, I mean, in the, uh, cost on the building. At, uh, when we first started, we did not think we'd have enough money to do the pay. We were going to have just a gravel parking lot. But if you'll read down here, we've got four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars in the, uh, that we've accumulated since two thousand and five that you have in the bank that's had been spent. That money can only be spent on park, I mean, on park improvements, cannot be spent on salary this time. New two percent is a little more liberal, you can do a little more things like fertilize, putting dirt on the fields, this type of thing. So we'd be able to use a little more of that money than we had before. We have, uh, we, we're going to Omaloot, the five hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars when the contract is up. We have left in the, the bond money of a hundred and forty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars. What we're asking is to transfer some of the money out to where we'll have, we need five hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars to finish and four hundred, five hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars to finish that, uh, forty-three cents to finish up projects. Uh, the two percent money has gone up and, uh, it's increased ten percent in physical, in, in two thousand and, uh, physical year two thousand and nine over two thousand and eight. In five months, we have collected, uh, two hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars. When you transfer that money over, it will not jeopardize anything on our payment. Our bond payment has been made this year. We have, now have in, well, it's, it's all atomized down here for you. But we need this money transferred over into that account so we can use it to finish on our park. And if y'all will look over this, if you've got any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer.
Mr. Moore.
Mm-hmm.
So basically what you're saying.
Pick up the left.
Basically what you're saying is you got old two percent money that y'all already paid your old bonds off with, that's in the bank. You just need our approval to transfer that two percent money, which is designated for capital improvements in the park, onto this project to finish out paying up the project, correct?
Right, that is right. That's all we have.
That's just, just to put it and not get into, to dollar, you know, this, that, but that's the simple fact is you got money that you've already paid off your old bond, that that money was supposed to be used on. And you just want to transfer that, which was originally intended for capital improvements within the park, right?
Right.
So take that, put it on this building, which I would consider a capital improvement right in the park. Anybody else got a question?
Mr. Mullin, are there any other cost-saving measures that y'all may be able to explore as well?
We've gone over the thing, and we have cut a lot of costs out. We went over the thing, Matthew Rye, who, uh, has, uh, when Clark Roman is retiring, Matthew Rye has, is, we have hired him as the park director. He has worked on this thing and gone over, we have cut out a lot of unnecessary extents that we have had for years that was just there. And we have cut that out and, uh, in, in building the gym, I was a little hesitant on building the gym for one reason. I thought our personnel would eat us up on the thing. But the way it was designed, uh, we are going to have to have very little, uh, have very few more people in order to run the thing. We've got, we're during the daytime, we have glass, and y'all are welcome to come down and look. We're a little bit behind schedule, but we, all the offices have glass fronts on them so the people sitting in the office can look out and watch the gym during the daytime. We don't have to have a floor walker out there, so to speak. We got racquetball, badminton, table tennis, volleyball, and it's something you spend, I think you'll be proud of it. It's been a long, hard go on it. We first started going to Tunica, looking at theirs, and, you know, it's kind of hard to match the, the Tunica prices that they have up there, but I think we got something better than what they've got in, in the gym part of it. Now, they got the water park that we can't touch, but we don't have the gambling that they have either. But is any questions?
I have a question. What would you use to pay for the electrical bill?
Uh, we would use, um, the electrical bill goes for the money that the city allows us every year, every, each month, each year for the, just totally expense.
Because a building of that size is going to be very expensive.
It's going to be expensive, yes.
Do we have any idea what it'd run on a monthly basis?
We had, Ed had a way to give us an ID, but I don't have those figures with us.
Maybe Ed has those. You have those, the figures, Ed?
No, sure I don't.
It's going to be, in fact, we may even get a long extension cord and plug in from the Cotton District for also very good.
We don't use much power, so that wouldn't help you very much. What concerns me, if you, if you earmark fifty-six thousand dollars at the current two percent for this year, that, uh, are you going to have adequate funds for the, uh, pay to you to bill?
Oh, yeah. If you're reading here, it'll tell you exactly how much we'll have left over after we do that. And we get our ninety thousand dollars, we'll have sixty-three thousand right there on the first go-round. But, uh, expense to finish the project is a hundred and forty-one thousand on the Maloo Park. But, uh, we see now, and I feel, and I have said this from the beginning, this is a twenty year bond, but I have no, I, I, I just think we can pay this thing off in ten, twelve years without any problem at all. The two percent money is going to increase. Inflation is going to kick the two percent up. Of course, it's going to kick expenses up too. But I, I see no problem at all in, uh, making our payments and our installments on them. We will have fees that we're going to charge, we'll help some. We'll have a fee to play basketball, a walking track will be free, badminton, tennis, all this stuff, all that will be a fee. And we're doing that, uh, just to try to cover some of the expenses on the thing. All, all the other gyms throughout the state that we visit has a fee for playing in, uh, dinner and game.
Mr. Mayor, I would move approval of Chairman Mullin's request for this funds transfer within their line items of two percent money. Second?
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you. Our next presentation, John, can you bring it up? You have Michelle.
Any presentation might be a little grandiose. It was probably so. It'd be very, very brief.
Okay.
Uh, we came six months ago for an approval on our CDB budget. Through some discussions with the board and through my new tenure partnership, uh, agreement for a six-month window to be tested, uh, to make sure that we are working very diligently to work with the city, build a relationship, and refine our bylaws to, uh, to reflect more of what I feel like that the partnership needs to be going forward. We've made significant progress in that matter. We have been meeting regularly. We expect to have something to present to our board for, to vote on by the end of this month. My conversations with the mayor on a regular basis have been very, very open, have had good, kind of good relationships with the rest of the members of the board. So I would just request that you, you consider approving the second half of this, of the CDB budget.
Really? You have a consent agenda?
Correct. And if you have any questions for me, now's your time.
Thank you for coming by.
Thanks very much.
Steve, I think you're going to represent the Downtown Association in the question for a.
Yes, it'd be pretty obvious that I'm not Melissa. It'd be much more pleasing to look at it. And I might have to ask for a bailout from Alderman Cox. Melissa did send me an email about why I'm supposed to be here tonight, and I left it. But we have, this year, we have a super opportunity with the Super Bulldog Weekend being on the same weekend as the Cotton District Arts Festival, which has really grown into one of the largest festivals in the South. And they're going to be the same weekend, so the crowds will be unusual. And what the university, I did the arts festival, and the city have all had a meeting, and they're going to run shuttles, similar to what we do on game day, but more shuttles. I think they're running two, and anybody that knows different can correct me, I think they're running two from nine to eleven, and then they're picking up four from eleven to five, and then two more up until nine-thirty at night to shuttle people all the way from campus to parking at the Methodist Church and, and behind Regent's and Make the Loop and come back down Main Street, stopping at the Cotton District Arts Festival. And so anyways, I think there's like eight or nine stops. The athletic department is picking up two of the, the cost of two of these shuttles. The Cotton District Arts Fest- Festival, I believe, is picking up the cost of one of the shuttles. And the Downtown Association, we were hoping with the, with the cooperation of the city would each split a shuttle. And I believe the total cost of that to the city would be about three hundred and thirty-seven dollars and something, uh, to, to pay for half of one of the shuttles that Downtown would be paying the other half. So I'm requesting, uh, that sum of money to help with that shuttle.
Any questions? Motion? Oh, we approve that. We are approving. Thank you, Steve. All right, now the mayor's business, and we have consideration of the folks that we're appointing to the sidewalk committee. Board one, we have Bethany Stitch, we have Sandra Sistront, Sandra Sistront, back in the back. Joe Fatisey, Board four, Richard Workingon.
I've asked, yeah, I've been, I've spoken to him.
Jim Gafford, Board five, Gordy Isaac, Board six, and Alvin Turner, Board seven. And I believe they'll probably start meeting, uh, fair and soon in regard to getting reports back from the folks. Under item B, the emergency repair of sirens, we did a test, and I believe we had eight, is that right, Ms. Roderick, that did not respond or did not work?
Uh, yes, sir.
And we are looking for Bob's radio to repair this for us. I guess he is the designated person that does that type of repair. And we have no idea what it's going to cost. I don't think the citizens would like for the fact that they would have eight sirens not working, and we would like to get him started, get some idea. We can call you in regard to what, I can't imagine, I think, a real expensive thing for him to do. But we need good operation to proceed with getting these things repaired. Or we can wait to get it, but bring it back to the board. Anytime might have a tornado, might blow half the city away, and the folks might get upset they didn't know about it, the tornado. Do we have any idea? Any idea? We just know the tests were done, I believe, today, am I right then?
Yes, ma'am, the tests were done. It's noon today, and I got a call from Mr. Rips this afternoon.
Um, Mr., um, I don't know, Mr. Bob Blessing, what's Bob Blessing?
Rose.
Rose. Uh, Bob Rose has looked at them before, and we just, because we have eight, and I think he looked at four of them before and gave us like an estimate of twenty-two hundred dollars, I don't have any idea. I mean, until he looks at them again to make that determination, I can't really give you a ballpark figure. If you want to do it not to exceed amount, but, you know, they. First up, so we have some maintenance, not maintenance, but we have some supplies and small tools in that budget, but not any more than seven hundred dollars is currently budgeted there.
Would you consider him a single source supplier on this?
Uh, yes, he's the one who's been doing all of, all of our radio work. He does it as part of the contract? Yes, he's on contract.
He's the only one?
He's, yes.
Because you said four, or how much last time?
Uh, probably twenty-two hundred dollars. I have, Ed's been kind enough to bring me previous, um, worst-case scenario would be twenty-two hundred dollars for the controller and radio for each siren. And that was from, uh, actually a year and a couple of months ago. So, but, but that's just a ballpark.
Is that twenty-two hundred figured for all of them or each?
No, no, this was, this was back with some repairs from two thousand and seven.
How many radios did that?
Um, uh, one, it says, that's just one. But, but we don't know what's wrong with the others. I mean, they have to be analyzed, and, and that determination may, I put in front of you the various and sundry problems that were articulated, um, chopper failure, battery failure, communication failure. Some of it may just be as small as closing a door, doing a reset on a door. But we don't know until we get there and do that. And we've got four, this is twelve, we have a total of sixteen. And we have four older ones. If y'all recall, we tried to budget for new ones a couple of years ago, but they're an expensive item. And so we were continuing to use the, the four that were old and do not report down to the emergency management area. And so these are the ones that reported back. We have four that do not report, that we have to have someone underneath them to listen to them to make sure they actually sound. Um, and we know one of those is inoperable. So we've just got to do an analysis, and it hasn't been done longer than it should have been done, we should have been doing it, um, in the last few months. But obviously, we can address it now, we are aware of it. If you'd like me to come back with an amount, I could do that, but, um, that's entirely up to y'all.
I would move approval of the repairs with this board finding that Bob's radio is a single source supply for these items and repair of these items.
Do you want to include any kind of not-to-exceed amounts?
With a not-to-exceed amount of six thousand dollars.
Second?
We have a motion to get Bob's radio to do this with a, with a not-to-exceed amount of six thousand dollars in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. We need to go back in, I'm told, to. Committee, do we have a motion to make the appointments that are the people that I just named to the sidewalk committee? Who would approve, Mr. Mayor, those names? Do we have a second? We have approval, motion approved, and a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. It brings us down to, uh, I believe, consideration of. It brings us down to, I believe, consideration of resolution approving the organization distribution of preliminary official statement authorizing execution, distribution of official statement pertaining to the sale of 3 million general obligation public development bonds, Series 2009, to Starkville, Mississippi, authorizing the execution of carrying disclosure certificates pertaining to said bonds in part of related purposes. These are for our roads. Do I hear a motion?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Wow, we moved it on quick. We don't have any water here tonight. pontificate. Okay, this, this brings us down to go to, do I hear a motion to go through closed session of discussion of pending legislation, pending relegation. Do we have a second? All those in favor say aye.